I guess we'll call the meeting to order. We're on, we're rolling. Fantastic. How many of you are here in regards to 52 Otis Place? All right, so I think maybe, does anyone think we should wait a few more minutes to let people come over to the library? You think everyone you expected to see here is here?
I know they were networking, so they were pretty aware.
Do you think we're all right? Maybe? All right. All right. We think we're all right? I think we're all right.
Yeah. Move to take 52 Otis out of order. Our fourth application first in consideration of the audience's volume.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections from the audience?
Yeah. Any objections to taking that out of order and taking it first?
I didn't think so.
All right. And that's what we're gonna do.
Okay, the fourth application, Anthony, is the application of Karen and Kevin Hunter of 8 Northie Farm Road, Situate. They're requesting a special permit slash finding in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 8, 10.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 52 Otis Place in Situate, Massachusetts. Representing the applicant is...
May I?
Please come to the table.
Just before you get started, a couple of notes, folks. The applicant's gonna make their presentation, if you please allow them to. When we get to the public comment portion of the application, which we will, if you could please as clearly as possible state your name and address so you can take notes for the minutes. Thank you. Sorry.
Hi there. I'm Rick Savant. Let's send back the team. Survey on the project. I did a property survey and the location of the existing house and the abiding houses in regards to 620.4, the average setbacks which we utilize around this project. As shown on the plan, we have an existing house there that Mr. Hunter is proposing on removing and replacing with a new house. The new house shown on the plan, it does meet the current zoning requirements.
Is that Mr. Hunter that's with you?
Yes, he is. I'm sorry. Yes. The proposed house shown does meet the zoning requirements, and it does utilize that average setback, 620.4, for the front setback. We located all the houses within 200 feet into the street corner, and the average is shown there is 24.2. We're actually a little further back than that, 26 feet. We meet the sideline setbacks of eight. We're proposing 8.3 on either side of the house, the rear setback, 20. We're a little in excess of that, 20.3. Mr. Hunter prepared the application. We did the survey for him and prepared this plan, so I can speak to the boundaries and the setbacks. That was pretty much our extent of it, and Mr. Hunter did the remainder of the application. So I don't know. That's basically the project. I don't know what questions you might have.
Sure. Who would like to go first? I have an idea of who I'd like to go first.
48, Section 6 allows the board to grant relief if somebody wants to tear down a house and build a new house in its place. And the standard that's used is that provided the new non-conforming structure and the new non-conformities on the lot will not be substantially, more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the current pre-existing non-conformities. The use is conforming. You've got a single-family home today, you're gonna have a single-family home tomorrow. The question is, is the proposed structure that you're proposing to build, Mr. Hunter, is that going to be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood? You look at what you have today, you look at what you're gonna have tomorrow, and you say, "This is our job on the board. We weigh that, and we say, 'Is this going to be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the home that you have there today?'" And with this application and with the other, there are two others that we have tonight that are similar. I have, I wouldn't say agonized, but I've given it a tremendous amount of thought, much more than I usually do, because of the scope and the scale of what you are proposing to do specifically on Otis, and then what is also proposed to take place on Marion Road. Those are the two that jumped out at me. And I read the cases. It's a case, Davis versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Chatham. It's a 2001 case that defines neighborhood. What's a neighborhood? And great deference, according to the appeals court, great deference is given to the local zoning board to determine what is the neighborhood. In Chatham, the neighborhood included the water because there was a Coast Guard lifesaving center, the lifesaving house, that was going to be altered to include some berths for boat, 10 berths for boats, and that would disturb some existing moorings in Stage Harbor in Chatham. And if you know Stage Harbor, it's already crammed. So the board was allowed to say, "Yeah, that's part of the neighborhood." So great deference is given to us to determine what's the neighborhood of Otis. I'm a townie. I know all of the neighborhoods in Situate, probably a little too well, and I know this neighborhood. I've walked up and down Otis. I'm familiar with Allen. I've worked on Allen. I worked at the Welch Company for a long time. I know the area, and I know the neighborhood. And I'm sure that the other guys on the board also know the neighborhood, and they're gonna have their opinions. I'm pretty fired up about this, so that's why I wanted to go first. I believe that what you're proposing to do would be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than what is there today. And the reason is, is that it is a neighborhood where you are of, for the most part, modest-sized homes, not mansions, not palaces. They're single-family homes, and for the most part, they're all well-maintained, they're attractive, they're reasonably sized in proportion with the land on which they sit. Your home would be much larger in terms of coverage on the lot. It would be much larger in terms of its scale with the neighborhood. And again, I've given this a lot of thought. I ran it by my appeals court, my kids, and I asked them, you know, "What do you think the neighborhood is?" And they all had their ideas about what constitutes a neighborhood. It's not just the immediate of Butters. Now, we received letters from the neighbors that were not in favor of this. I don't want you to think that those letters persuaded me to change how I thought. I appreciate, we always appreciate when neighbors weigh in, one way or the other. But we bring our own judgment, our own experience, our own knowledge, and hopefully wisdom, to the decisions that we make. And I considered what they had to say. Sometimes I give it some weight, sometimes I discount it. Sometimes you've got a neighbor who's thoughtful, sometimes you've got a neighbor who's a lunatic. And I'm not saying that that is the case here. You know, I thought there were some very helpful letters, one of the best letters I've ever seen from an Abutter. And I considered all of that, but I also considered my experience, my knowledge of the neighborhood, and what you propose to do. And that's, taking all of that into account, that's why I am opposed to it. That's my two cents for now.
There you go. Two and a half.
Yeah, sorry.
Two, wow. Tommy, what do you got?
I tend to echo what Brian said. In this neighborhood, growing up here, going up and down those streets, seeing the other homes in the neighborhood with a home of this size scaled on that lot, I just, I think it's too much. I'm not saying that there isn't an alternative, that there isn't something that you could go back to the drawing board on, but I think something like this, I think this, to me, is a definition of a max build. The number of square feet compared to what it is now. I'm somebody who's in favor of, in properties like this, homes like this, some homes can be redone, but I think it needs to be proportionate to what's in the neighborhood. There very well may be a different plan, but in my opinion, this isn't the right plan.
On that point, Tom, it's not our job to redesign what you propose or to tell you what we will and will not approve. There are other boards that get more into that. Our job is to look at what you have presented to us and rule up and down on it. So to Tom's point, we're not saying that we would not permit you to do anything. We're saying that what you have proposed, or Tom and I are saying what you have proposed, doesn't meet the standard.
Right. You have the right, you know, under the statute, to propose or raise and reconstruct, and it's just whether it jives with the neighborhood. And this might be a case, depending on how it plays out, that maybe you do resubmit something, maybe you do find something that works, and that at that point, we'd be able to review that plan as well. Ed?
In the application, you've got a drawing that indicates the architectural plans for building elevations. Those were not submitted with the plan, with the package that I have.
Rockwood's plan submitted. I have a copy here, but...
It was not submitted. We didn't get anything. And it wasn't required that it be submitted, to be clear.
And I'm not suggesting you have to submit them now. I'm simply, here's my issue. As zoning appeals board, we are in a situation where a lot of properties that pre-existed the establishment of zoning don't meet the zoning requirements for specific reasons. This one is lot width, lot area, lot frontage. As far as I can tell, that's it. In all other respects, you're meeting the requirements of the zoning bylaw for the structure you're looking to put here. Again, it's not part of our application process to review designs. It has to be, the structure that you were to build would have to be, meet the building requirements. It would have to be under the height restrictions, et cetera. The fact that it's going, it's increasing in size relative to what's there is a function as much of what's there as what's being proposed. We do have some information presented to us about the neighboring properties and how the size of the structures that are in the neighborhood, so we can, it's an empirical decision, it's not a subjective opinion as to what the neighborhood looks like. But I'm in a situation where we have other neighborhoods in town which have done max builds, largely because the lots are all small. I'm thinking of Cedar Point.
Yeah, Lighthouse Point.
Most specifically. And in order to get what we consider today a habitable property of, you know, three bedrooms with two and a half baths and a living room and a great room and everything else people think they need today, they've built out on the lots, pretty much. It becomes a slippery slope. At what point do we say this needs to, this should have a redesign? We don't have in our bylaw a restriction of volume or mass of property, of structure or coverage. We do have impervious material. We'd have to, as a possibility, you'd have a stormwater review as a result of increasing the impervious material on the property, but I am not sure that that couldn't be met. All that being said, I don't know what, I don't know how we can decide on this in such a way that is going to satisfy everyone, but I've always advocated that someone who's looking to build in a neighborhood should consider the neighborhood and have some discussion with the neighbors, and to some degree, try to understand what fits there. But I'm also a strong advocate that if you own the land, you have the right to do with it what is allowed under the law, so that's my quandary.
I also find myself with quandary. First, a couple of things I want to clear up, and one of them begins with a question. The application sheet noted the lot at 7,200 square feet. The plan notes it, and maybe that's just a carryover from the assessor, at 6955. Is it 6955? So the mistake was on the application? All right, so we'll take care of that now.
We matched the assessor's, but...
Correct. But the lot is 6955. You did the math. So I wanted to clear that up. Also, presently, the house is 950 square feet. What you are proposing is a house of 3,359 square feet. That's an increase of 2,409 square feet, which is an increase of 254 percent. The house will be 3.5 times what it was, but I think there was some confusion. It will not be a 353 percent increase, and I think that's an important difference. I don't think it's really in dispute that this is at least close to the smallest lot in the neighborhood, and what you're proposing is the largest house in the neighborhood. And if I lived in the neighborhood, I'm sure, for a variety of reasons, I would not be for that. That said, we are here to tell you that we think your proposed construction will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. My quandary is the word detriment. For me, a detriment is what zoning and the town has the right to restrict your property for. While lessening a neighbor's view or making your house not aesthetically pleasing to what a neighbor sees for the neighborhood is certainly a detriment to that neighbor, I don't feel that the zoning code gives us the right to restrict your property based on those types of detriments. If we are talking about overcrowding, if we are talking about safety, I feel that those types of things are detriments that the town and Massachusetts law give the board the right to say, "No, that is a detriment, that if we find substantial, we have the power to restrict this development." I think that if people took a step back, they would see that in many areas in this town and on at least a few applications tonight, we are trying to enforce a lot coverage bylaw. The problem for me is a lot coverage bylaw doesn't presently exist. I might not be against a lot coverage bylaw, but I am very against enforcing one that doesn't exist. The house that they propose, well, and to use a personal word, is huge on a, personal word, tiny lot. They're obeying all of the setbacks that the town of Situate requires. For me, to deny them the right to build a house that obeys all of the setbacks, I need to find a detriment that I think gives us the right to restrict someone's use of their property. If I lived there and I was losing a view that I loved, I would be very annoyed. I like to think, that I would still think that I don't have the right to restrict them because I'm losing that view, or because I think the house is too big, or ugly, or a monstrosity. That, for me, is where I struggle, and I am not sure yet, and I hope maybe some of you can enlighten me, that I see the type of detriment that I think I have the right to enforce against. I will finish with, currently, the house is how many bedrooms?
Three.
It's three bedrooms. And how many bedrooms are proposed?
I'm sorry, the existing home?
The existing home is how many bedrooms?
I think it might be one.
Is one bedroom?
I've only been in it once or twice.
And how many bedrooms are proposed?
Three.
Three. And in terms of parking, the home will have a garage?
Two-car garage.
A two-car garage.
There are two bedrooms, one bath.
In the house currently?
Yep.
Thank you.
Two bedrooms, okay.
And also have a two-car garage, and it looks like space to park two cars at tandem. It looks like a...
Yes.
It looks like the driveway's full width.
Yes.
Is it, yeah, because we have a proposed drive plotted there. Okay, I mean, I think some of you folks see where I'm going with that. If this was a six-bedroom house to me with no garage or one-car garage and a skinny driveway, we would have some concerns. We may have some concerns anyway. We would have more concerns.
Well, we, and the, excuse me, but the...
Of course.
The average setback can become a real concern where a garage doesn't have enough room for a car to back out of the garage and not be on the street before the view lines are there. That doesn't appear to be the case here, but using average setback is something that, it's not that unusual, and in fact, if the property immediately to the east were more consistent with the other four properties on the, shown on the plan, the average setback would be a good deal less than it calculates to be, because that 30, you've got a 24, a 20, and a 22, you know.
And just to touch on average, my suspicion is, a lot of you fully understand average setback, because as Brian alluded to, we had a, the level of sophistication of the letters we got was above average, I would agree. But just to be clear on average setback, it's very simple to say the required setback is 30 feet, the proposed home is less. That's a non-conformity. It's not. There is an intricacy in our code that, based on the average of the homes around it, and I'm generalizing right now, that required setback is allowed to be lessened in circumstances. Those circumstances exist here, and so there is no proposal of a non-conformity for front setback.
It's 200 feet in either direction from the parcel, interrupted only by an intersecting street.
So...
Same side.
Yeah, on the same side. Yeah, so in this case, it'd be interrupted by Hazel, and then...
Front.
Head down toward Front Street.
With that, I think if you guys are done, we also received a memo from the town planner, which was great, and I think I speak for everyone, but don't let me be free. We love seeing other interested groups in town, especially those that have knowledge on applications like this, submit things to the board, we welcome it. And so we received that here. My suspicion is, is that if I went into that right now, I might steal some thunder, so I think maybe we'll go to the audience next, unless you guys disagree.
Sure. No, I just, it's great to get a memo from the town planner, but...
It's also unusual.
I've done, I've done probably well over, what, 200, 48, Section 6 hearings? This is the first one I've ever got a memo on. So somebody, somebody with some juice had their nose out a joint and got the town planner to take some time out of her day to write a two-page memo opposing this application.
To be fair, though, Brian, we've had a change in the department. We have a different town planner. I mean, we may be seeing more of these.
I welcome it. It's fantastic. The more, if we get these on every single one, it'd be fantastic. But it's just like, whoa, where did this thing come from?
So Brian, I tried to explain to you that these Abutters, as you know, were very fired up about this.
Which is great.
In a sophisticated way.
In a great way, in a great way.
We welcome it.
And the planner received all of these letters, which made her concerned.
And we appreciate that.
Right.
Then that...
Bring it on.
That makes sense to me.
It's fantastic.
With that, I'd like to turn it over to you folks to hear someone you have to say, and hopefully, maybe addressing some of the things that we raised, because we welcome that.
Does Bob have any concern first?
Bob, thank you.
No, beyond what's been said, you know, I can see both sides of this issue. I will tell you that when I was on the planning board, this was probably now, at least 10 years ago, a floor area ratio bylaw was extensively discussed. We started even drafting one. I think I have the draft still on my screen top, somewhere on my home computer. This is not a recently, you know, brought-up subject for the town, and it continues to be discussed.
So with that, we'll start. I'll call on you, and if you could please, just your name and address again clearly, so Sue can enter it into the record. Anyone?
No.
Sure.
Speaking of microphone or just stand up?
Just standing up. Sounds like you have a good voice for it.
My name's Mark Scott. I live at 54 Otis Place. I would be to the left facing 52 Otis Place. And again, I know you have our letter in front of you. Again, we're just concerned with the lot size and the volume of the proposed home we built. On his application, on Mr. Hunter's application, with the plot plan, it indicates that that storage shed which is attached to the house is approximately 18.1 feet from my property line. My property line isn't marked. I've retained Ross Engineering to do a survey of my property, so I have full knowledge of what that property line is between 54 and 52 Otis Place. And anything that comes within, it just seems that he, if the applicant builds 8 feet from my property line, that's close to me. So I'm just trying to establish my property line to just get, we're all on the same page of where 8 feet is for a true property line. I, it's an older home. I don't know where the property line is, but 18 feet from that storage shed would make it seem like it's halfway up my perimeter into my shrubbery and everything else, so...
I think we provided photographs, so you guys would have some idea.
Just in...
Yes, thank you.
So we were only notified of the hearing two weeks ago, and I know all engineers are busy now, but it should be done within a week, hopefully. Again, the water issue, stormwater that we touched upon, we're just worried about the displacement of 950 square feet as opposed to a lot, a base lot of 2,200 or whatever, maybe, garage included in the basement, what that, what that water would do to the Abutters, the end water. We all have water problems in the neighborhood, and I think it's based on the Steinbeck Place development. That's changed a lot of the water table in the neighborhood.
It, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's changed the water table on Otis?
Yes.
Thank you.
So since, since the Steinbeck Place was built, now we've kind of all experienced water problems, where we've invested in some pumps or French drains. It's just, it's just something to happen. I think there's been vernal streams under there that have just gone other ways. I guess you've already addressed it. I know there's no zoning bylaws for the lot, the building ratio, but the average in the town was 26, in the neighborhood, rather, was 26 percent. This is clearly about 47 percent. It just, the proposed driveway, some, one of the trees would have to be taken out, a town tree, and we've lost a lot of trees on the street as it is anyway. It's getting quite barren, and it's just the green space that would be taken out, the air and water circulation of our side yard. It just would seem like an eight-foot alley between the garage and his proposed garage.
The loss of the tree also affects the groundwater, too.
Right. So the loss of the tree out front, and then those trees we maintained for over a while, the trees that border our lot, you know, I just think, it'd just be in a couple of, a year or two, those trees in that shrubbery would die because they'd just be lack of light, lack of air, lack of circulation, and things like that, and just...
Another thing relating to the trees, it's...
You will absolutely be given a chance.
Leah Scott. It's our understanding from talking to the tree warden and also to the town planner that there has to be a public shade tree hearing before any trees can be removed?
If it's a-
If it's on the way.
I just want to put it in her letter.
So we, we did receive that as part of the memo from the town planner to answer your question.
Yeah, that's not part of what's in front of us.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the jurisdiction of the planning board?
I believe so. Yes, and we're getting a nod back there from someone who would know. And, and so, were you finished? Please.
I'm much finished. Thank you for your time.
Of course.
And that's all. And just, Otis Place, it's a narrow street, there's no on-street parking, and I know we're trying to get as many cars off the street as possible, but it's just, for that volume of size, it just seems like a bigger house. Biggest house in the neighborhood, one of the smallest lots for that particular size. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Anne Burbine, 1020 Crest Road, Chairman of the Cituah Planning Board. It's too big, I'm too small a lot. I curdle with Mr. Sullivan. And are you creating a more non-conforming house on a lot that does not meet the 10, the 10,000 square foot R3 residential home?
The house is conforming.
If the house is on that particular lot-
Yes. Present, present and post, the house would be conforming.
But that will then be, the proposed dwelling is 3,300 square feet. The largest house on Otis is 2,600 square feet.
I don't disagree with your sentiment.
I know it's too, too big on a lot that is way too small, which will change the character of the neighborhood.
So I, I, this is important, and this is the discussion, and we appreciate, and I appreciate you being here. My issue is, and I'm not saying I disagree with any of your statements, my issue is, I don't feel that I, as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, have the power to rule against a construction project for those reasons.
I agree with you. I think I firmly agree with property rights, sir.
Yeah, I'd, yeah, absolutely.
Positively agree with property rights. And I think that the point was made. I think I'm you. There's no reason why that this house could not be reconfigured to be a little bit more in keeping with the neighborhood. We are, we have too many McMansions to the-
I, yes, please.
So I understand your point. I understand and sympathize with the neighbors. It is happening all over town.
Yes, but what's in front of us is this and this neighborhood, and that's what we have to focus our, our decision on. And I disagree with Annie. Uh, excuse me, I disagree with Anthony. I think we do-
You called me your wife's name. That's other issues. I was not offended, though.
I think-
She's lovely.
I think we do have the authority, and we have the right to say no.
And that, and that's a discussion I want to have. I, I want to understand.
To adjudicate.
And to, and to Anne's, Anne's point, Anne Burbine's point, this is the first house, and this house gets built.
Yes.
Now the neighborhood has been altered. Now, the next, the next-door neighbor, the Scots come in. You remember Yertle the Turtle? You read Yertle the Turtle to your kids?
Yeah.
You know? And he wanted to be the highest, Marion Rhodes, the same deal. And I was going to bring up Yertle the Turtle for Marion, Marion Rhodes, but I'll bring it up here. And in the story of Yertle the Turtle, which is a Dr. Seuss book, uh, Yertle is the king, and he wants to be the tallest, and he sees something, sees a tree that's higher, and he just keeps wanting to go higher and higher and higher. And Mac, poor little Mac, some of the bottom, is the one who's-
Right.
Taken all the weight for Yertle. And eventually, Yertle sees an, like, an eagle, and it's too high-
You retell the whole story.
And Yertle falls. But, but that's the point. It's like, we, we, we're, we're, there's the Yertle-ization of neighborhoods in Cituah where you're so passable.
And Brian, and Anne, I, I agree with all of this. What bothers me is there is a process set out for the town and the townspeople here and our respective boards to stop that, and we are not utilizing that process by voting no for these reasons tonight. The process is to enact a zoning bylaw that presents this type of development, and I worry that we are short-circuiting that for better and worse in certain areas by denying this right to build within the building envelope. We, if this is something that is important to us for what seemed to me like very valid reasons, we should have a bylaw that allows us to stop this from happening.
That's, to me, that's a discussion for another day. The question is, does this application meet the 48 Section 6 standard? I submit, as proposed, the application does not.
And what, and, well, I, I think I'd rather hear from the public, but I-
We stole your-
I would like to suggest that we're talking about a neighborhood and, and trying to develop, and this is your argument, I guess, that the neighborhood has a characteristic that needs to be maintained or may, has a right to be maintained. But just down the street, we have the condominiums that just went in, which significantly changed the neighborhood. Um, the, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a Google Maps. The lot behind this subject property, which is, uh, I guess 55 Allen, um, it's got a big pool. Looks like it's under construction at the time this map, this picture was taken, but-
How many stories is the pool?
Well, but it's, it's a lot of impervious material. That's what I'm, you know, a significant reduction in permeable material. Um, so I, neighborhoods do change, and, and I think we have to keep that in mind, too. And the other thing I'd like to suggest is, whatever we find, um, we are subject to an appeal. If we found in favor of the applicant, um, the applicant would proceed at their, at his risk if, um, an appeal came forward, appealing our decision. Likewise, if we ruled against the applicant, um, that wouldn't be the end of it. The applicant could appeal our decision as well. We have to find in a way that the court will support us, and sometimes we've had, we've had great success at that, success at that, but occasionally when we try to do what, what we think is right, um, we find out that the court doesn't agree.
As well. And let me, please.
I'm sorry, I won't take up any more of your time, but just to your point, um, as far as, you know, I, we understand that there is currently no bylaw-
Yes.
Building coverage bylaw. But on the other hand, what happens, we believe, if you start to allow homes that are unusually large into a neighborhood, then the entire neighborhood becomes viewed as a carry-down neighborhood. It changes the whole character. And we do believe that is substantially more definite.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No. All right. We're going to close that.
Does the applicant want to?
Yeah, do you have some more that you'd like to say?
Well-
You want another minute to decide what should be, you want to share?
No, not really. I mean, I heard some solid things said up here, and I heard frankly, some silly things said here. That's beside the point. I don't know if I would want to, or my wife would want to move into a neighborhood and build a beautiful home like this, and it's too bad they didn't get to see these plans, which would absolutely make it a nicer neighborhood. But you know what? Would we even want to live there with a bunch of complainers around us or people that have valid reasons? But when I hear McMansion, I mean, that strikes me as-
Uh, you're clearly frustrated? I, I would-
I'm not frustrated.
Okay.
Since I bought that property, I've had three offers on it.
Right.
God knows what the next guy is going to do with it if I don't want it, and I'm not saying I don't.
Of course.
I think I have plans to build a beautiful home on that lot that would fit very nicely into that neighborhood. Whatever you call that neighborhood. Are you going down to where the condos are? Because you didn't talk about the condos. Are you going down to where John Tedeschi built? He's right on the street. He's consuming more of that lot than I am of that lot. So, you know, be consistent with your arguments if you're going to make arguments, but, um, you know, like, keep going back to, you know, no one, doesn't sound like anybody wants that house in that neighborhood. But I'll wait to hear your judgments.
I guess it's our turn. I, I mean, I think it's apparent that we've given this one a good amount of thought. Do we have a motion? Does someone want more discussion?
Could we?
You have something else? Absolutely, please.
We need to consider this, you know, and continue this and put some power into it before we make a decision on it tonight.
You certainly do.
I think we'd like the opportunity. If you feel differently, I'm sorry, but if you'd like to take a vote.
If, um-
It's final.
If we, if we vote-
Yes.
They've got, uh, two years before they can come back.
That's correct.
If, um-
In 20 days before they can appeal.
Yeah. Yeah, depending on how, depending on how the board votes. It sounds as though, um, it'd be two to one. If I can, Tom and Ed are against it, you're in favor of it.
That's what it sounds like, too.
That's what it sounds like.
Yes.
So they may want to-
Withdraw.
Uh, withdraw unless they're going to submit. I don't know. I mean, they've had, they've had the time to submit it, and everyone's here.
But, well, so you have the right to-
Withdraw and resubmit.
Withdraw and resubmit as you see fit. You have the right to continue, to modify your application in a manner that you think will be beneficial to you in the long run, and you have the right to ask us to vote on this. I, I think if you have any questions about what we view as the consequences of each of those three, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'm clear on those, and I-
Okay.
I'd- I go back to the comment I made that it's always, I, I always advocate that an applicant can do with their property what they can do by right. And we've been talking about a lot of, the non-conformities here are few, and there's nothing that can be done to change them, and there are no new, new non-conformities. However, it's always helpful to work with the neighborhood. And as you, same as Hunter, you don't, you don't want to move into a neighborhood where you're viewed as the pariah or the, you know, the one who came in and destroyed the neighborhood. Even if it became the nicest house in the neighborhood and started a, a groundswell of home improvements that made it the nicest neighborhood in the town of Cituah, um, being the first is always difficult in that respect. However, um, if you were to, if we were to continue this tonight, it wouldn't have to be reposted, it wouldn't have to be re-noticed. It would be continued to our next meeting. During that time, you could decide if you wanted to withdraw, if you wanted to, um, ask for us to continue it again so you could have some time to meet with your neighbors, talk about possibilities, look at those offers, et cetera. And take into consideration what's been said here by us, and I'm presuming you've seen the, the letters that have come out, come from the neighbors.
No, I have not.
I would advocate that you could ask, um, to have us have, um, provide it to you so you can see the concerns people have raised.
And I think we should quickly, since you have so much to consider, also quickly touch upon the memo that was submitted by the town planner. It will be available in the file, so you could read it in its entirety. But quickly, the issues were raised beyond laying out the facts that we've all heard. Were the question of the stormwater permit. To the extent that this development requires a stormwater permit under the bylaw, you'll need one. I, that's not something that is before our board or that we have purview over. It's an absolutely valid point, though. There was also the question raised about the shade tree or trees. Another issue, basically in the same bucket as the stormwater permit. To the extent you need one, it sounds like you very well may. That's something else you'll have to deal with. It sounds like regardless of what you do or don't do with the development. The, I, they raised a point about the architectural plans, which you didn't submit. You can, maybe they're going to be changing a little bit. You can submit those. You don't have to. And then a mention was made of really what we've talked about tonight, that this is not a very large lot, and it's not a very small proposed home. There was also some concerns raised about parking, um, and the parking on the street. For me, I'm not so sure those concerns stick for me since we're not talking about a six or seven-bedroom home, and there's relatively ample parking in the proposal. And if they park on the street, they have the right to be towed or ticketed just like anybody else. Um, but that was a quick summary of what was raised in the letter that will be available. With that information, are you looking for me to have the board vote? Or it sounds like you might be looking to continue?
Continue.
I'd move to continue the application, um, of Kevin E. and Karen H. Hunter regarding 20, 52 Otis Place to our April meeting.
Which is April-
April 20th.
It's the 25th.
Oh, we did that, that's right.
Because it's the week-
Fantastic. April 25th. Location to be determined?
No, it's in the library.
It's in the library. Sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, just continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who came here tonight. Uh, I've been doing this for a little while, not as long as my fellow board members. It's rare that we have this much appo, opposition to an application with such civility. So thank you.
All right. I disagree with you.
Huh? I think you might have.
I, I hope they come back with something that's, that's, uh, more palatable.
So are we going to Ian Tosca?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right?
So next up is the application of Joseph Ian Tosca, Post Office Box 452 Rockland, Mass. Mr. Ian Tosca is requesting a special permit slash finding pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 810.2 of the Cituah zoning bylaw, um, or any other relief that the board deems necessary to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family home at 68 Seaview Avenue, Cituah, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Representing the applicant this evening is Mr. Paul Marabito of Ross Engineering.
Thank you, Brian. The applicant owns the existing dwelling at 68 Seaview Avenue, and on the plan outlined in yellow is the perimeter of the lot. The reason we're here is because the lot does not have a required frontage of 100 feet. It's 50 feet in the lot area. It's 5,000 square feet instead of the required, uh, 10,000 square feet. The property line is outlined in yellow. The existing structure is outlined in blue. In the blue are the proposed additions, as well as, um, the second story that is going to be added on top of that structure. There's, there's an attic area, which we all also included in the gross floor area. There are no plans at the present time to finish it off, but, but we did add that in the event that were to occur in the future. The front yard setback is based upon the average setback in the neighborhood of 24.2 feet. The proposed setback is going to be 24.7 feet, or six inches further back from the average. The side yard setbacks, um, the, um, existing setbacks are, are 9 feet and 15.9. The proposed would be 8.8 feet and 15.8, um, which is well above the required side yard setback of eight feet. Uh, the rear yard setback is, the required is 20 feet, the proposed is 20.5 feet. The rear yard setback is, the required is 20 feet, the proposed is 20.5 feet. The area in blue, if you look at the rear of the house, the existing house has some jogs in it, they're going to square that off and go up. And the front, likewise, on the side, and then that front portion is going to be open deck with a roof over it. So, that's part of the structure as well. The, again, the foundation isn't going to change. What they're going to do is to build on top of the existing one-story house and go up on the second floor and the attic. There's no requirement for stormwater permit. The increase is only 8.4%. The threshold would have been 25%, and we're well below that. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Paul, one question for us. The proposed switch, you have this 3126. You, you calculated that also in the attic?
Yes. Yeah, that includes the attic. That's 904 square feet, the attic is.
Is the attic going to be living space?
Not, not currently, but could be in the future.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Bob?
No, um, no comments. Hopefully, the existing first-floor construction is capable of taking the loads that are going to be imposed on it, or it will be suitably reinforced.
I second that.
Well, Bob, to that end, do you require that they have a structural engineer certify?
We will.
Oh, okay. So, it's not like we're rolling the dice.
No.
I know, I was like, wait a minute. Stand back.
This is zoning, not building.
I was like, I don't know what makes it naked, but...
They actually, they actually used to test old buildings that way sometimes when they were converting, like, an old mill to something else. They would literally load the floor until it broke, and then they'd know, you know, what the, presumably what the...
Sounds kind of like...
Similar floors and other areas would take.
Get the new kid to carry the stuff in.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any comments from the audience on the application? No. All right. Uh, it's a nice discussion. It feels strange, because it's a little bit more straightforward than the last one.
Well, it is, it is. I mean, it's, it's, it's not increasing significantly the coverage on the lot, and yet it's still, it's a, it's doubling the size of the house. You know, it's more than, more than doubling, but it's putting a second floor on a one floor.
It is interesting to me in that the percentage increase is almost exactly the same, but because it's not covering more of the lot...
Right.
My suspicion is, we're going to be very okay with this, which does go back to my point on the last application. We were trying to enforce a lot coverage by law. That doesn't exist.
And the, and the...
Yeah, again, Anthony, I respectfully disagree with you.
I, I understand. And, and you have a point. You do.
But the lot...
I think I do, too, but you make a good point.
I, I can differentiate these two.
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's do just that. Unless you have something else, sorry.
Yeah. I, but I argue, I would argue that the percentage increase, as adjusted for the last one, was 253%. This is 248%. It is almost exactly the same.
Yes.
The, the lots are, the two, the two lots, Paul, this has nothing to do with you. The neighborhoods, the neighborhoods are, are different. This is a neighborhood of 5,000-square-foot lots, and with similarly sized homes, virtually everyone in this, you know the area.
I know the area.
Virtually everyone in the neighborhood's in the same boat. Whereas the other folks, it was, it was a different scenario.
We've also included 900 square feet of the attic, which isn't one of the used...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, famous last words. Do you want to put that in writing?
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to find that the proposed addition of Mr. Ian Tosca at 68 Seaview Ave. as proposed in the plan of Ross Engineering dated February 12, 2019, will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure at the site, and the increased floor area will also not be more substantially detrimental than the current floor area.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Are you, I forget. Are we, are we writing that one? Or are you taking this? We're doing it, right? Yeah, done. Who's up?
Who's up? I don't know.
I'll take it.
You sure? All right. You got Tom on that one. I still owe her one from last meeting.
Yeah, I owe her the, I owe First Bridge Road.
I'll have this due tomorrow.
All right.
Next up, Robert Jordan and Mary O'Donohue, 8 Hillcrest Road in Situate, requesting, requesting a special permit slash finding to raise and reconstruct a pre-existing nonconforming building at 8 Hillcrest Road in Situate, Massachusetts. Representing the applicant this evening is Jeff Morse.
Greg.
For the record, Greg.
Sorry, Greg.
Remorse, yeah, registered engineer.
I'm Randy. You're Jeff. It's all good.
I get it all the time, don't worry. With me is the property owner, Mary O'Donohue. This is, as was Justin read into the record, a raise and reconstruct at 8 Hillcrest Road. This is in the R3 zoning district. The lot itself is nonconforming. The lot is nonconforming with respect to lot size, being at 7,603 square feet. Frontage is nonconforming at 90.07, and lot width is nonconforming, being at 80.07 feet. Currently, the applicant resides at the property in a single-story, single-family home built circa 1900. The proposal is to take down that home and put up a new dwelling. The new dwelling would be a two-story building. You'll notice that in both the existing and proposed scenarios, the footprint of the building is essentially the same. The building is being placed within a foot of all the setbacks as currently exist. It does comply with the side yard, front yard, and rear yard setbacks, but similar to the proposal that was just before you, we're adding a second story, essentially, so the floor area here increases greater than 20%. The floor area that's proposed is a total of 2,680 square feet, which represents 146% increase over what is there. We have two letters from Abutters, the Gallops and the Corbos, in support of the application. I submitted those to the board.
Any questions? Brian?
Uh, no, thanks for making this one so easy.
You don't want to spread it out?
Um, it will need to go in front of the historical commission, just because of the age of the existing structure.
Good.
It passed that.
Oh, good. Okay.
The reason that there was no probably just addition to the first floor, from an engineering standpoint, it doesn't make sense with the... The, the house being built in 1900 or so, it makes sense to take it down. We can put a new foundation in, and be fully compliant.
And that whole collapsing and everyone perishes thing that Paul mentioned.
Exactly.
Potentially we'll avoid that.
Yeah, yeah. It seems like they're out in front of that one.
Gets us a little bit of a basement as well, which is nice.
Uh, anyone here to comment on this? No? All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion on the application of Robert Jordan and Mary O'Donohue of 8 Hillcrest Road, Situate, Mass, for their request for a special permit finding in accordance with Mass General Law 48, Section 6, and 810.2 of the bylaw, for the raise and reconstruct for the property at 8 Hillcrest Road, as depicted on the plan by Gregory Morse, and submitted with the application dated 2/1919, that the proposed raise and reconstruct is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll take that one. Anthony, did I win? Yeah. I gotta roll in the hall, accuse myself. Tom would accuse himself due to some familiarity with the property entitled.
The third application, Samantha Fortin of 65 Marion Road, Situate, Mass, requests a special permit finding pursuant to MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6, or, and/or Section 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, and/or relief that the board deems necessary to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 65 Marion Road, Situate, Mass, Assessors Map 40, Block 12, Parcel 14, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%.
Good evening. I'm Caroline Reese from Cavanaro Consulting. I'm representing Samantha Fortin and our husband, Nick Seaver. They are the owners of the property at 65 Marion Road. We're here to present, as you said, a check, a Section 6 finding on their property to build an addition. The lot is currently nonconforming for lot area. It's a little over 5,000 square foot, lot frontage, and the front setback, as well as the side easterly setback. That's 7.9 now, just shy of the eight feet. This is what we call through lot, so it has two frontage setbacks, one on Marion Road, one on 11th. The Marion Road face has been their front of their home for all intents and purposes. They are proposing to increase the square footage of their home. They do not have architectural plans yet, so they're trying to find out what they can do before they pay their architect. What they are proposing is to maintain the front nonconformity setback of 23.1. If you look at the requirement based on setbacks of the neighbors within 200 feet, that'd be 24.6, so we're off by a foot and a half. They want to keep the front portion of their home. They are agreeing to make that east side setback conforming, make it, they're proposing 8-1, so to bring that into conformance. And the 11th Avenue setback would be at 28.6, which is conforming based on the 200-foot average on either side, though a front setback is 30 feet. They're at 28.6, but the average for 200 feet on each way is 24.6. They also have an existing shed, and because the lot is so small, there's not much place to put it, once you do the addition. What we propose is to place it with a 10.2-foot setback. What we did is just looked at the average of sheds. Most homes have a shed on 11th Avenue. They use that as the rear of their house, 200 feet each way on that side of the road. So, even though that ruling applies mostly to primary structures, we just tried to look where we could place a shed. The average sheds, 200 feet either way, are set back 9.9 feet. So, they're hoping they can keep their shed, and proposed it at 10.2. It is a large footprint increase. They are planning on having a porch. I know they don't have plans yet within part of this, but it's a very, very small home at 796 square feet. So, that's about it. I do have letters of support from Abutters. I could read them or give them to you. I don't know if you've received them. I think you may have gotten one. Did you get three? I have copies. May I submit copies or like, submit them for the record?
Absolutely.
Sure, they're short. I can read them, or you guys can...
Yeah, I think I'll look back, too.
Did you submit them to the secretary first?
No.
Please give them to Sue first.
Okay.
All of them or just the copies?
No, I do have all three. You do have all three?
Great, okay.
Okay, so you have all three? Oh, good. Good. The homeowners weren't sure if they made it to you.
Sure.
Okay.
And Sue, sorry to interrupt, no bad letters?
No, they were, they were in support.
Okay.
And I agree with you.
Nice work.
And on the neighborhood, I don't have the square footage of the street. I did drive down it today. There are some smaller homes. One of your neighbors has a smaller home who wrote in support, but there are some very large homes on very small lots there. Being the through lot, they're just small lots. And Sand Hills, especially going down Marion, there's a lot of two-story, larger homes, I believe.
Great. Ed, you want to start?
Um, Caroline, what's your, how do you spell your last name?
R-E-E-S.
R-E-E-S?
Uh-huh. Hard spelling, easy name, yeah.
No E, huh?
No E.
Um, no, I mean, there's, consists with the kind of thing we're looking at. The shed looks like it's about 10 by 12.
Yeah, we should have that...
Well, what's the rule on a shed for 10 by 12 shed if it's not in a foundation?
You don't need a building permit to build one, because it's under 200 square feet.
Yeah, I think it's 8 by 10, I'm pretty sure.
It is required to meet setbacks.
Of the dwelling?
And the way, the way the average setback regulation, I read this today, having looked at this plan, I don't believe that shed complies with zoning in that location. It needs to meet the same setback as the, as the primary structure.
And I...
Joseph, quick question. It doesn't...
Doesn't require a building permit.
She raised a point about the average setback of other sheds. Does it not meet, because they're just calculating the other properties with sheds, whereas...
No, it, well, all right, I'm sorry, Anthony, continue with your question.
No, no, it's fine, I, but...
All those other sheds are nonconforming.
If...
Right.
Right, but many of the homes in the average setback calculation are nonconforming, too. So, do we not count the sheds?
The, the wording of the regulations specifically includes, excludes accessory buildings when you're calculating the average setback.
Right. I think that may be the spirit of the rule, though, when it's applying to accessory buildings. It's interesting.
It's creative, but I don't think, because then you get into a situation of, you know, nonconforming sheds that are, were placed on the lot line.
I think you need a variance for the shed.
Okay.
I, yeah, I'm having trouble with the shed.
You would not, you would not meet the, personally, you, I don't believe you'd meet the standard for the granting of a variance.
The tough thing is, they don't have a backyard, and everyone in the street treats it like a backyard. I was driving down, there's sheds right up to the street there, but that's understandable.
And, and the home will have a garage or no?
No.
It won't have a garage. It's all good.
You can talk.
That's absolutely whatever you want.
We need a place to put our lawn mower, our shovels, and our lot is 760 square feet. We're looking to have a family. We just got married. You know, we're looking to put a porch in the back of this, within this setback. We're not looking to take...
Within the footprint.
Within the footprint, but we want to see what was allowed. This is our first time going through this, and all the other homes have sheds on the street.
Yeah.
And this is a very small shed, but my priority is the house, so if the shed is an issue, I think that we would rather move forward with looking at the structure of the home.
Yeah.
You might be able to design the house, you could, if it were a priority. With an area within the house itself, barn doors, you know, facing out towards 11th Avenue, that would serve the purposes you're talking about.
Yeah. The issue is, I don't really see a way around needing a variance for the shed, which you'd have to show a hardship, which I think actually last month...
Yeah, not having a shed is not...
Not having a good place to store your outside stuff doesn't meet the legal hardship argument.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, it's a hardship that I'm going to run into on my lot, because I'd have to put my shed in the middle of my backyard. Yeah. I, I don't believe you need a variance for the house.
No, they need a, they need a finding from us.
They need a finding from us that it's not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
You might find a creative way, though, in that you have a, you can put a porch, and you might be able to have a place, a leaning porch that you could put it, even if it was a little subterranean, but not roofed. The porch could not be perceived as a roof, so it would have to be permeable, but...
A porch doesn't have to comply with the setbacks. You can have an open porch right up to your property line.
As long as it doesn't have a roof over it.
As long as it does not have a roof over it.
Well, the porch would be in the setback with a roof over it.
You can't have a roof over it. You can't have a roof over it.
No, in the setback you can. What you just said is.
Within the setback.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's thinking in the footprint.
I'm sorry.
We're talking about three different things, it's confusing.
But if, if you were to, you can put, let's call it a deck, non-roofed deck can extend beyond the footprint that we're talking, but beyond the envelope, it's the drip edge of the roof that is what we consider the, the edge of the building. So you could have a porch that extends out, maybe with a side access panel to get underneath, so you're out of the breezes, and a tarp over your mower or something, it's not a very big lot, you don't need a tractor, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think the point of the board, I think my point is, with some creative architecture and the use of that rule, you might be able to find some storage options on either side. Yeah, for me, a shed's going to be a tough one, which I recognize that stinks, especially because the lot has a shed now. I think it's probably important that we get to the conversation on the house, I don't know if you folks were here for our 52 Otis conversation, there's obviously some similarities here, a big difference is the tone of your letters, I think.
That doesn't influence me.
I, I didn't suspect it did.
Yeah.
Um.
And you know what, and this is, and this is what frosts me about the well-heeled folks up on Otis, they get the town planner to set aside time to weigh in on Otis, and then the folks that are living on 11th and Marion have no one to advocate for them, and that's, that's, there are two different standards that are, that are at play here, and this is what frosts me.
I, I might think that we shouldn't assume that the folks on 11th weren't noticed and don't have the right, the ability to say yea or nay, and it sounds like the ones that felt like they should speak up spoke up in favor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that they were not given notice, I'm confident they were.
Sure.
It's that, it's that there are two different standards that apply here, there are two different standards to different people, that, for people that are in different economic positions.
Right, I'm, I'm trying to focus on these folks.
Yeah, I know, well anyway, getting, getting back to.
Who knows who the town planner is?
Yeah, well anyway, getting back to Samantha and Nicholas, and I congratulate you on the purchase of your home in this neighborhood, it's a beautiful neighborhood, I used to live in the neighborhood on, on 11th, and I have a lot of fond memories of my time on 11th Ave. However, what you are proposing to build is out of character with the neighborhood, and it is, it gets back to my point about changing the character of the neighborhood. At the end of Marion, there is an enormous structure of dubious taste, personally, and this home, I, we have no idea what it would look like, but it is of a mass that is completely out of character with the neighborhood where it would be located, and I submit it is far too big for, for, for the lot. It is a small lot, I agree, and it is a, it is a neighborhood of modest-sized homes. I would submit that a 3,300 square foot home is not a modest-sized home in Situate, but it's not a modest-sized home in this neighborhood, and I believe it is out of character with the neighborhood, and I believe that what you're proposing in terms of square footage would be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. That's my opinion, and I'm not saying that you can't do anything with that house, that you are forever having to live in 796 square feet, but what I'm saying is if you were to come back, and what I would propose, is that you come back with something that's more in scale with the neighborhood, or you persuade us, Caroline goes and sharpens her pencil and comes back with, well, in this radius there are homes that are, on average, say 2,500 square feet, and what we're proposing is 2,500 square feet, now you've, you've made an argument and we can, we can rest in that safe harbor, but right now, I know, I, I lived right across the street from this house, I know that house is out of character with the neighborhood. Now, the house that's, that's at the corner of Hathley and 11th is large, but I'm pretty sure it's not 3,300 square feet.
There are a lot of really big homes on Marion Road.
At the end of the street?
Even across the way from us, there is a, they're all two-story homes, on either side of us, they're, they're single level, but every other home is, goes just as far back as we're proposing, and there's two stories, and they even come closer to the road, and I agree that this is a huge setback, like I said, we were just trying to see what we could get approved, because we.
I, I don't, I don't fault you for that, I just, again, from, from my perspective, I would like to see something scaled back, and, and I, I'm loath to tell you what to do in terms of you can do this, you can't do that, what I'm saying is, you need to determine what you can live with, and then come back, and again, this is from my point of view, present that to us and convince us, this is something that we can live with, but again, that 3,300 square feet on, on that sized lot, I just think is way too big.
Go, go ahead, please.
So if we came back with plans and said that eight of that feet from, from this, what's called footing, footprint, was, was going to be a porch with an overhang, and above it was not going to be, and that would, that would take back from our square footage, we would only be going back maybe 15 feet with a second story, and then it would just...
I mean to interrupt you.
Okay.
That, that's a view of one person on the board. Also, to be clear, you were looking for us to find that it's substantially more detrimental or not, and you need, if you were to build this, two out of the three of us to find that. Brian made his opinions clear. I think Brian makes some great points, I disagree with them entirely. I don't think I have the right to say that your house has to match the character of the neighborhood. It's your house, and it's your lot, it can't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I don't feel that character has to match. I don't feel that I get any opinion whatsoever on what your home looks like. I've used the phrase before, and I think I might have gotten some trouble for it, I'm going to use it again, you could build a purple pirate ship, if it's within the envelope, that's your right, that's your taste, you paid for the land. I don't have a problem with this, and to be honest, I'm looking at the rest of the houses in the neighborhood, there's some pretty sizable houses in the neighborhood, and maybe I'm skewed because the square footage of my home's going to be pretty close to the square footage of your proposed home, that's not a ridiculously sized house for the town, and to be honest, I'm not sure it's a ridiculously sized house for the neighborhood. You're entirely within the building envelope. I don't see a detriment, and it seems like all of your neighbors that got noticed don't disagree with me, at least. So that's where I'm coming from. Want me to talk again?
No, nonetheless you want to.
I've always been an advocate that the, the bylaws are basically to establish where you can build with respect to side yard, front yard, rear yard, et cetera, can't do anything about the lot size. I respectfully disagree with Brian, I think there are a number of houses in the area that have increased in size. 3,300 square feet, you shouldn't have any trouble finding a place for your, for your lawnmower. I think the challenge is, I've, I've also been an advocate that the applicant does not need to bring architectural drawings to us for us to opine on, as that's not part of our decision. However, sometimes applicants bring architectural drawings as a positive persuasive technique to help us to appreciate what their vision is. We've taken a lot of, I, I've taken a lot of flak in the past for just saying, well, as long as it fits in that, those setbacks, it meets the requirements of zoning, but my argument is that's what we're here for, zoning. We don't have an architectural review committee, we don't have a lot density, a structure density bylaw, so I have to rule on what we have, and I'd argue that what we have is an application that meets those requirements. I would encourage you to consider that you don't want to be the biggest house in the block, you don't want to be the most expensive house in the block, any, any Realtor would tell you that. I don't think anyone told Cornelius Vanderbilt that The Breakers was going to be out of character, although I don't think anyone wanted it built, when it was built on Ocker Point in Newport. Today, people think it's lovely, I still think it's a hideous monstrosity of way over proportion, but.
And you're right.
But he could get away with it because he was well-heeled, and I bet the, the town planner were there, one wouldn't have had any problem with putting their name to the document. However, he also added, you know, fencing for the first time ever in that area, there's never been a fence around the property. So things, sometimes people do things that are startling and striking and new, but in a neighborhood like 11th Avenue, Marion Ave, I don't think you want to be the biggest, I don't think you want to be startling, striking, and new. You want it to be keeping with the neighborhood so that it can be marketed in the future if you decide you want to move on to a larger home, or a smaller home, so I would advise that, but it's not part of my decision. I see it basically, all three of these, as meeting our zoning bylaw.
That's why we have these meetings.
That's right, and we have to do it openly, so you can't hit me.
No, I love you guys, I really do, I.
I think it's important that these viewpoints are on the board, I like it.
And I, as, as much as I like you and respect you, I 100% disagree with you.
I understand. And I, I think, I think everyone's getting it, I'm not sitting here saying you're crazy and I don't know what you're talking about, you're not, and I do. With that, you have some opt, we are going to do some, we're going to do some other stuff, I skip over things. Bob, do you have anything for us?
I, I would side with you and Ed on this one really, particularly since there's no negative response from the neighborhood. I'm well aware of the house down at the other end of Marion, which is something that obviously should never have been allowed to happen, it happened sort of before your time, at least, I guess, and before mine, but I don't think this is particularly out of character, there are other large houses in this area, along Hathley Road, which is within a stone's throw of this lot, the Toll Brothers are going to be building houses that will dwarf this one, in both price and size, I just, I don't see how you can possibly say this, you know, is so far out of character with, with what's happened or what will be happening that, you know, it, it poses a problem.
Do we have anyone from the audience here to speak on this?
Finnbar Collins, neighbor 62 Marion Road.
Great.
I totally agree with you guys, what the guys are doing, and, I mean, you know, the weather cost us pretty frequently, it's going to be like a new addition to the neighborhoods, which, you know, there are second floors, I mean, second story houses down there, and it's an improvement, and as Bob said, what they're doing up the street and Toll Brothers say, it's just going to blend in, and the other plant was down the street, at the end of my street, but the Taj Mahal down there, I mean, hey, I have no problem with the guy, but you guys can stop it, I don't believe in me, you know, but I totally agree with you guys, and, you know, they should have their, our, our permit to build it, you know? I mean, it's an improvement, because there's a few houses left there that haven't been touched in years, and slowly they're all doing the mower, and I think it's totally right. It blends in, I think, fine.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
With that, you've heard from the board, and for me, this is where we're in a tricky situation, especially since you're not represented by council, and I don't mean to disparage the representation that you are giving at all, you have some options that I think you heard us say at 52 Otis. We try to show everyone our cards, when the board votes on something like this, and even on a finding, they are prohibited from coming back, they're prohibited from coming back with an entirely new application with a new footprint?
Have to be substantially different.
It would have to be substantially different, so you sort of lose your window for two years if we say no. I, I'm not against a straw poll before we do that.
Well, they've got, they've got your two votes, so.
Yeah, you have mine, so I can say that, and that's what you need, and I recognize that you guys, that this is a big deal, it's a big deal to my wife and I when we put a deck on our house, and your composure has been impressive, and so.
But to be fair, the, the options are, you can withdraw, because clearly there's a difference of opinion on the board, you can ask us to vote, we can vote up or down, you need two, you need two out of three. I, you know, I suppose anyone can always change their vote, but I've made it pretty clear, I, we're voting on zoning and setbacks. The, you can ask for a continuance to, in order to bring additional evidence that might persuade all of us to feel that this is the right thing to happen, if Mr. Sullivan had a different, you know, change of opinion.
I'd like to go forward and vote.
There you go.
Could I clarify, are we going to vote on just approving the home without the shed, correct?
Correct, the shed is not an option.
I, I gotta make, yeah, we're going to vote on the shed as well, and based on, yes, it's not all or nothing.
I just want them to be clear of what we're voting on.
Yes, so you would like us to make a motion on your ability to build the home as proposed, and to separate out our decision on the shed? Absolutely.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily separate that, I would just delete the shed from the proposal.
Yeah, there's a way we can do that, but it's not an all or nothing situation, to clarify.
You need two out of three, correct?
All right, I'll move to find that the application of Samantha Fortin of 65 Marion Road to, for an addition, you're not doing raise and reconstruct, right, you're doing an addition? Or you don't know, you, you definitely, you're going to use basically a portion of the existing structure?
Correct.
Okay, so the addition at 65 Marion Road, as proposed on a plan by Cavanaro Consulting, dated 2/27/19, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, with the exception that the shed may not be relocated on the lot, and that the building setbacks must be adhered to for both the dwelling and accessory structures.
Aside from the existing 23.1-foot non-conformity?
Well, the, the building setback as, as shown on the plan.
Excuse me, just one second, Bob, what's, or, I'm sorry, Caroline, what's the, what's the elevation?
It's 20, 20.1.
So it's, so it's not in the floodplain?
It is not.
Okay. I was just, my concern was, if it was in the floodplain, with the volume of work they're doing, they, they would have to completely elevate the structure, and that might amend the decision, but.
It's in zone X.
Zone X.
They're not in, so, okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
There you go. So found, yeah, you got, you're good to go. We need to write a decision, which we have a little bit of time to do, we'll get it to you. We'll get it to you as soon as we can, and then there is an appeal period during which you build your own list.
Thank you.
The decision gets filed with the town clerk. At that point, the clock starts to tick, and it's 20?
20 days.
20 days. That anyone can appeal our decision. So if you, if you tore the house down, someone appealed our decision, and the court overturned our decision and said it was not okay to build, you'd have an empty lot with no house on it. Don't do that.
Or you'd have, or you'd have a house, like
Wait, 20 days.
The guy in Truro, the guy that built his house and then had to tear it down.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for, thanks for moving to Situate and building a nice house.
I love Marion Road.
Yeah.
Congratulations. And I, again, I, it's my opinion, I don't mean any disrespect to you folks, I wish you all the best. It's a great neighborhood, I love living there, and I'm sure you're gonna enjoy it. Thank you very much, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
I guess I'm doing that one, right?
Sure.
We have our friends back from Herringbrook.
Chairman, nice to see you. Always good to see from all your faces.
How are you?
We're doing great.
Thanks for coming out. I don't know if there was a miscommunication.
It was Anthony's fault.
That's what I was gonna say.
In all honesty
My wife's fault.
We, we submitted, we talked to ZBA Council, it wasn't clear to us, and a presentation was expected, or we were invited. I'll take responsibility for that. We're here tonight, so. So I, I brought the request, I brought the plans, I brought everything that was submitted as part of the modification, minor modification request. I can distribute that, I can jump right into what we're asking, whatever pleases the board.
If you have a plan to spare, I'll take one.
Sure.
For, just for consistency sake, I'm gonna give everybody one.
So, just a little bit of context mostly for Mr. Sullivan, as he wasn't involved with, is the board
I've been involved, I've been to most of the hearings and all serious
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm a shut-in, you know? I've got no life. I've been to most of these hearings, like a pathetic soul that I have.
Well, you, your words, not mine, so. So after the last hearing, we had a, you know, we had some
He just called you a pathetic soul.
No, he said it, not me.
He was clearing the record. Continue, please, continue.
So we had an enthusiastic neighborhood group, small but enthusiastic. By the end of the public hearing, I think it's not a misrepresentation to say that everybody made peace and everybody was, was pretty happy with the plan. Following the close of the public hearing, I took the neighbors out to the Hook and Harvest to talk about the landscaping plan and to introduce our concept of having a few, really what are, you know, just glorified garages, what you'd see probably on some, you know, big, single-family houses, albeit more bays. And to my, I was very pleased that the neighbors were, and I don't speak for them, but I think the chairman and Ed know that I tend to be a man of my word, the neighbors were very, very supportive and excited about the garages, because they serve a couple purposes. One, everybody knows that all of our parking spaces were surface spaces, so the garages provide an amenity to some future residents. They're, it's limited, it breaks up the sea of asphalt. It also serves kind of as a screen to our two most, to our two closest abutters, in that it's closer to the property line. But these are really just single-story garages. It also shields headlights, which was Gloria's biggest concern, as well as our neighbor. And the garages are strategically placed that those cars closest to the neighbors would shield headlights of the cars parking. So that is one part of our request. The other part of our request, we, we received a waiver for a height of 40 feet as part of, as, as people in the construction industry know, as we're advancing our plans to CDs, it's become clear to us to provide nine-foot ceilings, which we'd like, which is a, you know, a very, a very nice unit. We need about six more inches per floor, from floor one to two, two to three, three to four, about six and a half inches. So that equates to, instead of 40 feet, 41 feet, eight inches. So by all definitions under the regulations, what we're asking for are, are, you know, what would be considered minor and substantial changes. We've also, as part of that meeting with the neighborhood, done some minor changes to our landscaping plan directly upon the request of our two direct abutters. We focused in on the areas, and I'll point to these. The areas here and the areas here, which are closest. This neighbor over here, they were just concerned about the fence and some plantings here. But this plan reflects specifically what the neighbors requested, and we're just asking for, I mean, that will be part of our building permit plan set, which honestly, probably won't be submitted for three or four months or so, as we're working through our CDs. But that's representative of what they've asked for, and we're just asking for the board, per Condition 6 in the permit, to approve that administratively. And that's really it. I mean, just as a way of background, if members are interested, we've identified our debt, we've identified our equity, we got extensions to the state permits we needed. We're closing on the property in May. We're gonna take this kind of in two distinct pieces. We're gonna try to do the site work late summer, early fall, and then start pouring foundation this winter and targeting February 2021 completion, give or take, because we'd like to start hitting the market right as the weather starts to get nice. So, so that's where we're at. You know, we're, we're asking for the board to consider this an insubstantial change, in which case it's, it's approved administratively. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
One quick question is, just
Oh, and we are losing one space, one total space, just because the nature of the surface, I mean, of the garages, how they're erected, we, we ended up losing one total space on the plan.
And then the wastewater treatment plant, that's shaded, that was, that's unchanged from the prior plan, right?
Unchanged, unchanged, yeah.
The buildings are shaded.
Sorry about, yeah, yeah, that's not a garage.
Makes sense.
Yep.
No, I don't, I think we, I think we were pretty straight, or I was pretty straightforward. I wasn't looking to cause these meetings to be anything more than just an opportunity to review what you finally came up with, supporting your representations during the hearings. I continue to be pleased with the changes that, I think we've come a long way, and from the original plans way back, and even through the plans that you brought forward in your first representation, so I don't see this as substantial.
Yeah, I mean, I was at the initial hearings when this first came in as, as Herringbrook Towers, did its first iteration.
I was in middle school at the time, so
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. And this, I mean
I was hoping one day I'd get to middle school.
Brian had hair.
Hardest 15 years of my life. The, the plans, as, as they have evolved, keep getting better and better and better. And I, I am hard-pressed to think of a 40B application where the applicant has bent over backwards more than you folks have, far more than I would have if I were you. But you've, you've done every reasonable thing that you could to accommodate the abutters and, and then some. And I think the garages are an excellent addition, both for you and for the, for the, both for the project and for the abutters. I think it'll make the units that much more attractive, that much more marketable. So I, I applaud everything that you've done, and I would find that the changes are insubstantial. One of the reasons that we wanted to have this is, I'm not sure how closely you follow Situate monthly, but this project has received an insane level of scrutiny from the keyboard warriors, who are complaining that the town is permitting building in the wetlands. And it's a constant refrain, and anytime somebody mentions Herringbrook, there are typically 100 or so comments from the folks that like to weigh in on this, so
You're regurgitating the most rational of the comments.
The, 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 the level of social media attention this project has received, to me, would warrant you making some sort of a presentation that can be pointed to online if somebody has questions or if they
Is that, I mean, I'm just curious, has that gone on since we closed the public hearing?
Yeah.
Really?
It's not necessarily specific to Herringbrook, and, but that's certainly been mentioned and
There are two projects in town. There's another one involving Toll Brothers.
I, I've committed to Cathy Donahue, and forgive me, you guys will know, but it's a regional riverfront or watershed group that, yeah, that
The north and south
I'm joining and, and stuff. But one thing I would like to do, in all seriousness, because as these gentlemen know, we're gonna own in, in long-term. I mean, I would love to have interested neighbors or people, you know, once we have something to show, over to see how spectacular this is gonna be, because it's gonna be, you know, first-class, so
Yeah, clearly.
And, but certain people will never be satisfied, so, and I get that.
I'm not sure we need to say anymore on it.
All right, fair enough, so
But, and to be honest, I was a big part of the, where are they, I feel like they should be here crowd, and it's not lost on me, making you guys come down here, and, you know, I think you've, you've seen from some of my past actions, I don't take lightly, making people jump through hoops, but given the application and the enormity of it and everything that's gone on, I didn't really view this as substantial either, but on the off-chance it was, I didn't really feel comfortable, for lack of a better word, putting that to a vote without having you folks here.
And I appreciate that, and I'm glad we all got on the same page, so
And I think it bears clarifying, the, the social media uproar is largely a concern by probably less well-informed people, that boards act in their own personal interest and not in the interest of the town. And there have been suggestions of graft collusion, everything else, and it's, it's not all directed at you.
The payoffs at Town Hall.
Anthony, we told you not to tell him.
Yeah, I know.
But clearly, clearly this board sits as volunteers.
My wife was fired up and maybe writing this song about some of it.
We sit as volunteers without compensation and do not receive compensation from the applicants, so
Yeah, there's a couple of rules against that.
Yeah. I hope we have to take a test every
Yeah.
Two years or three years, or, I don't know. But anyway, so
Thank you.
It was not directed at you personally, as it's just, what is?
And especially with, I think with 40Bs, you're always better off having the hearing airing on the side of caution.
Yeah.
I think that's a good point. So thank you for your
All right. So do we need a motion?
I think, are we, Bob? Anything else?
Good for me.
And it doesn't look like we have anyone here for the, you guys don't want to speak out against a 40B, do you? Okay, okay, now that we've covered that.
Move to find that the, the proposed changes, as outlined on the plans, provided submitted with the application.
Are insubstantial.
Are insubstantial.
Seconded.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, we appreciate it, we'll keep you guys
Thank you very much. Good luck. And we got some good news on interest rates, right? I looked at a little area in December.
We're using Bristol County Savings as our debt provider, yeah.
Do you want to set of these?
I'm not familiar with Bristol County Savings in this sort of space.
Neither were we, but
1.5% is part of me.
Yeah, we used CCRE, and we went out into the hall
Sure.
And got a ton of, they were very aggressive, they've done a lot of marketing handling, but really haven't been in the 40B world, so we're, we feel good about it, we have institutional equity, you know, and all our deals, so
Somebody else thinks people like live near the water, huh?
On the water.
Yeah.
On the water.
In the water.
Technically above
No, it's not funny, it's not funny. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
In the water.
We have, you do, look at that, I didn't print it.
Yeah.
We have our sixth application on the evening, the request for a modification of a comprehensive permit issued on February 10, 2003, and most recently modified on September 1, 2017, for the property at 90 Stockbridge Road, Situate, assessor's map 54 Block 2, Parcel 28. Dakota Partners, Inc. and Stockbridge 2 Realty Trust request a modification of the comprehensive permit granted under MGL Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, as amended to change the number of units from 74 units in 14 buildings to 68 units in 34 duplex buildings, and to modify the grading. The property is located at 96 through 100 Stockbridge Road and off Stockbridge Road. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and all the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll be brief. We were here two months ago, you folks wanted to have some peer review done, there was some discussions between the engineers. A letter was issued today that seems, in my opinion, to say there's no impact to the drainage system. Your engineer had a few comments with respect to the quality of the details, Marcus got some cleaner planners that the board's interested. But the long and short of it is, again, your engineer confirmed what we've been representing to you, that, you know, the, the changes to the project should not affect the improved stormwater drainage system.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we did receive, for the record, the letter from the town's peer review engineer, an independent engineer.
Paid for by the applicant.
Paid for by the applicant, it is important to note. And the summary of findings did say, I don't think I need to read the whole letter into the record, but did say, therefore we consider the proposed changes insignificant in regards to stormwater design, neither positively nor negatively impacting site drainage. In that, I would agree with your conclusion.
Yes, and, and I just want to say how frustrating it was for me to read the correspondence back and forth. Why these two engineers couldn't get together a month ago, or several weeks ago? Who knows? But it was just like, it's like, are you kidding me?
I was just as frustrated as you are. I think, I think the applicant who was paying for those delays is equally frustrated.
It was painful.
Yes, it wasn't one-sided, it was, it was, there was a lot of frustration for all involved, so
We're here now.
And then, and it's like, oh, well, it's all good. It's like, what, really? It took you that long?
And it's, you know, and that's what some of us suspected upfront. I think it was important that we did go through this process.
I'll disagree.
Yeah.
And after, you know, after, certainly after reading the level of detail and the, the level of review that was, that was conducted by our engineer, affirmed to me that we were, we were certainly reasonable retaining our engineer to take a look at this and to go through it, and, and there was a lot to the review. But again, at the end of the day, he did reach the same conclusion, that, that the changes as proposed are, you know, are not going to negatively impact negatively impact the drainage, but without the engineer, we would have just been, you know, guessing or relying on your representations without any review, so I feel much more comfortable.
I believe the engineer as well, the peer review engineer, did find some mistakes that were corrected during that course, which was helpful, and I don't disagree with that.
Notwithstanding the fact you paid him, it did help you.
Yeah.
That's even better, like, I got something out of it.
And then in terms of, you know, reducing the number of units, I, I think it's unfortunate that we're going to lose an affordable unit, but reducing the number of units is not, I think, you know, it's worth mentioning, but I don't think it's a negative thing, I don't think it's the end of the world.
I think we got a better product at the end of the day.
Right.
I think the review that you, the changes that were made to the building aesthetically.
Yes.
Came in to the times than what it was originally submitted under.
Yeah, it's more appropriate for the neighborhood, more appropriate.
And also, the time, I think, I think.
The town's need.
Yeah, I mean.
Took 20 years to get to that.
Yeah, and no, but as you pointed out, you know, you found, as you carried this project along, people didn't want those, those middle units, so everyone wants an end unit, so the duplexes really do make more sense at the end of the day.
And the townhouses now too, right? All. No, these are duplexes.
Right.
Townhouses.
There were townhouses.
Where we had that sandwich problem.
Right.
Yeah.
So, two things stood out from the letter, a little bit, it was, was really 2B, it's basically for, they asked, so, go ahead, please.
I'd like to address that. The next step for us in this process is, if you folks are inclined to vote this, we still have to go to DEP and get them to, you know, approve the revised plans, your conservation commission is going to be notified at that meeting, I would respectfully suggest that this comment should be brought to DEP's attention, so if it's truly an issue of concern, they can incorporate something in their, in a revised order of conditions, and that's my take on it, because what we're going to give you is the same thing we're going to give DEP, so.
And that's sort of the way it struck me, is that, we're getting a little technical here, it'd be great for me to raise a condition, that you submit a narrative as to how this pond is going to drain in the future to me, I don't know what I'm supposed to do with it, that's not exactly my area of expertise.
I see you going out there with waders on and inspecting it.
Yeah, there's shovel, right?
I think it's probably very important that it gets done.
Absolutely, but there are people that are, that's their job to figure that out.
And so, and I understand why CEI felt it necessary to put it in the letter, but yeah, I wasn't that concerned. Anyone have anything else? All right.
You're not coming back to see us again?
Well, I gotta come back here May 16th, I told Brian I'll be back.
So, one thought I had is related to that, is we were here in November asking to have the prior form of permit extended for a year that kicks us out to February 2020, I was hoping you folks, through this amendment, would give us a little more time, perhaps 18 months from the day you file it with the town clerk, and the reason I ask is, we have some other stuff to do, regulatory stuff with mass housing, mass DEP, and, you know, as much as I'd like to have this thing going sooner than later, I can't, I can't predict that, and I don't want to come back and waste your time another year saying we're not there, so.
Okay, Mike, I'm sorry, you said that right now the permit's extended to 2/1/20?
Yeah, it was February 2020.
Okay, and you want it extended to, was it the August 1/21? That's 18 months.
Yeah, that sounds about right, yeah.
8/1/21. How do you guys feel about that?
Yeah. It's fun.
Yeah, I think our interests are aligned as far as I can, it's not in your interests to start construction any later.
No. They're certainly, obviously, you can tell, they're spending money, they're trying to make the ball down the field.
Absolutely, yeah. I don't have an issue with that.
Other than that, we have no other information presented to you folks, so I'd ask you to close.
I would still respectfully request that we get progress reports.
Yeah.
And maybe in writing, and then if we feel the need to have you come in.
It's already in my schedule to come in May 16th, so I'll be here for that one, if you like, if you want it written, I'll send you a written instead.
Yeah, if you could submit something in writing, and then if we, if we just.
Either way, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Saving, trying to save your time.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, I would move that we, we permit the changes as proposed on their plans, and that we agree to extend the comprehensive permit to August 1st, what day of the week is August 1st, 2021?
I can tell you. 2020?
No, 2021. Right now it's extended, they want it extended 18 months, so it's extended.
August 1st is a Sunday.
Okay, so August 2nd.
There you go.
I was against the extra day for the.
Wouldn't it be 2020?
No, they want it extended for 18 months, so right now it's February 1st, 2020, 18 months, August, and the first business day is August 2nd, 2021.
You've got to deal with some regulatory bodies that move even slower than us.
Correct.
I wouldn't say that.
I would.
To August 2nd, 2021.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As a procedural matter, should I draft something for your consideration?
If you wouldn't mind, that would be wonderful.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you for your time, guys.
That'll see it filed with the town clerk probably faster.
Yes, it will.
Got you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No minutes. No minutes, right?
No.
All right.
I'll have to rest on.
Move to adjourn? Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here we go.